All right, good evening again. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District to order. It is, we're Monday, August the 21st, 2023. It is currently 6:48 PM and we are located at the Ringo Elementary Cafeteria at Fort Ringo. For purposes of determining quorum, let me go ahead and take Roco. Mr. Jay Peña.
President.
Mr. Basilio Díaz Barrial Jr.
Present.
Mr. Noi Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Johnny Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Lizard Velasquez Jr.
Present.
Dr. Veronica Barrera.
Present.
And myself, President. Eric Ramirez, let the minutes reflect that all board members are present and we do have a quorum to proceed. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pope, will you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Section three is approval of minutes for the special board meeting held June 1st, 2023, and the public meeting held June 22nd, 2023.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the special board meeting in June 1st, 2023, and the public meeting June 22nd of 2023.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrial, there's a second to that motion. Second, Mr. Castillo, all's in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum, I do have one public forum request. It is from Mrs. Rosario Osuna. She is GM Gruia Middle School librarian who would like to introduce a book that she wrote, her first youth adult book, called The Tears Behind the Smile: Poems and Reflections from the Heart. She would like to introduce the book to the school board. Mrs. Osuna, you may come up to the podium and take up two, five minutes if you need to, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, President of the Board, Superintendent, and members of the Board and everybody present here today. It is with great honor and humbly I present to you, as you mentioned, The Tears Behind the Smile: Poems and Reflections from the Heart. It is my debut book. It came out May 29th, and I'm happy to say that I was also, I'm from here, Rio Grande, so it's great honor to do this, and I represent the district as well. So I wanted to do this and formally introduce it to you. I am the librarian from Gruia Middle School, and it came out May 29th, about two months ago, and in about two months it already sold over 500 copies. It's for sale on Amazon and it's making like a lot of impact on youth, because when I first started, I wrote it thinking of the young adults. I am a librarian, but this has been a dream of mine since I'm a little girl, and this is a first of many. I am happy to say that my second one is halfway and my third one is already done, and the third one is a children's book. And I say it's done because the story is already done. It's a bilingual book, and the top part will be in English, the bottom is in Spanish, and I'm working on illustrations. And all this is done on my personal time, on weekends and whenever I have time. This book took about maybe three years, but the writings took about maybe seven to eight years even before I was a librarian. So some of them, before I present, I have to go back and read them, so I'm able to remember what I wrote, because it's a lot of writings that I do have. And some of the themes, because there are several, some of the themes that you'll find here is about friendship, the beauty of love, the ugliness of love, because unfortunately, love has both, and there is one that is making a big hit in its call, but he must really love me, I said. And I put it in here because I was thinking, well, this is for young adults, and I thought, well, how else can I make a difference with them besides being a librarian and helping and doing as much as I can at my campus? And I thought, well, I know that some of the topics that are in here are hard to discuss, and sometimes we just keep them deep down and we don't know what, how to express them or, you know, I want young adults to know that these are relatable poetry, poems and reflections that happen every day, and that they're not alone, that there is other people that also go through it. And I don't use names, this is a pronoun, he, she, they, so anybody can relate to any poems that you find here, and I guarantee you that you will find one that you will say like, whoa, that's for me. And there's also poems about, like I was telling you, violence in young adult relationships, and that one is making like a lot of noise, but in a good way. And there's also a lot of words of empowerment and how to put through, through any daily occurrences that we may be experiencing. And the main goal of the book was just to empower the reader to move forward and think positive, no matter the circumstances. And I've also drawn since I'm, I don't know, since I remember, a little girl, so a lot, it's got illustrations, and I drew them myself as well. So I know it's kind of hard to show you, but if you get your hands on it, you'll see that it's got illustrations. I know some of, I've had a lot of reviews, positive reviews, and one of them was that I break the monomy about poetry, because as a librarian, I do see poetry with images, pictures, but it's usually in elementary. And at the middle school and upper level, you hardly see that. But I did it because as a librarian, kids come to me and it's like, Ms., recommend the book. I recommend the book, and they're like, they look at it, in their words, no, they have pictures. So I thought, you know what, I'm writing it thinking of them. So I thought, poetry is a hard genre sometimes to pick up and read, so these are, it's an easy read. I know I've gotten reviews that say, hey, I read it in an hour, hour and a half, and you know, they fall in love with one, two, three, some half and some more. And it's out there, so if anybody is interested, and this is my book. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We should probably feature it on the website. Ma'am, I know we're not supposed to comment, but congratulations. Great job, you're from this area. My wife already read the book, she enjoyed the book. Again, congratulations for putting us on the map, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was about to say, we wanted, I think everybody wanted to say something, we're not supposed to technically, but I'm glad Mr. Barrial took the time, so congratulations.
Thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to do this.
Ma'am, of course, thank you. All right, before we proceed to reports and information, just some housekeeping.
Mr. President, before we go to their reports, Mr. President, before we even start the meeting, I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Peña. Mr. Peña, just before we even begin in the meeting, we just keep hearing these rumors because the air conditioners are not working, they're not working, the students are there, that there's mold, mold, mold everywhere, and I'm here to ask you, first of all, did the air conditioners, were students ever in peril? And do we have mold? Because that's all we hear, mold, 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 and I want to ask you point blank, do we have mold in our schools or not?
Yes, sir. I'll take the first one on ACs. You know, during the summer, we did have some go down, we've been fixing them, but day one, I want to say that throughout the district, most of the ACs were working, you know, maybe one or two classrooms here and there, but that's normal for a campus, a district our size. Everyone was comfortable and it was working well. So ever since then, they've been working very well, sir.
How about the mold?
Now, the mold, sir, after that first day, I've been working with our high school principals, making walkthroughs, visiting campuses, they've been doing several walkthroughs as well, and they haven't found anything, sir. Before school started, you know, our maintenance department did an outstanding job, our custodians, to fix and clean up everything right before school started. So during the time that teachers were back, so were our custodians, so were maintenance, cleaning up, getting our classrooms prepared, ready to go. So after that first incident at one of the high schools, everything has been cleaned up, there's no reoccurrences. You know, the principals, I ask them on a daily basis, you know, do you have any sightings or anything? No one has reported anything to them, sir. So, you know, in the future, I'd like for, you know, everyone to make sure that they follow the chain of command. You know, go to your principals, because they're the ones there on a daily basis at the campus, and if, you know, if they don't get any answers, or they can also inform me, I'm the superintendent, I'm in charge of all campuses throughout the district. So we will, of course, make sure we address every single situation.
Mr. Peña.
At no time can, do we want our children to be faced with any of these situations.
Mr. Peña, I'm interrupting because you're saying to contact you. I contacted you this afternoon via text, asking you about the child nutrition and the special ed, that I've had concerns that the air conditions are not working properly, I don't know if completely, but I still am seeing my phone and you have not responded since 12. So I pass these on to you, and I usually will screenshot, erase names and details, so that you can see that this is not coming from me, this is coming from people that are using me as a tool to get to you. There's people that are intimidated, they don't want to complain, they feel that they're going to be, get in trouble. How are we going to address that issue? Because I don't want to be skipping, I usually will tell them, there's nothing I can do other than pass on the information, and they appreciate that, and they're happy that at least I can do that. But how do we deal with these people that are afraid to come up to, through the chain of command?
For ACs, Ms., there's nothing wrong with letting me, the principal, know.
For the bus issues that I sent, for the mold issues that I sent, for the dirt, or not the mold, but the mildew, for everything, just in general, what do you recommend that we do? I've told them already, one of the things was give them your cell phone number and directly, but there's some people that are scared of going through, or intimidated, and so how do we deal with this?
You can continue sending me the information, Ms., because then it's my responsibility to go to the campus and identify, but many times it's very hard, because I don't get a room number or a building. So we try our best, if they're anonymous and they don't give us detailed information, it's very hard. So I send my administrators, classroom by classroom, desk by desk, you know, to try to identify.
I will make sure, or I will try my best to get more details, but please answer my messages.
The only thing I can say is, and I don't, I've never been a part of a school board that had ever fired anybody for politics. Yes, if they got caught stealing or messing around with little things or inappropriate things, but politics are politics. This board I have never been, the one I've participated with, there's other boards that have gotten rid of people, but not me. I think the number one thing we need to do, if there's a problem, go out there, bring it up, address it, and take care of it, simply put.
Mr. Peña, how are you making sure that these photographs are actually from here? And, you know, how do we know where they're from? Those could be taken anywhere. I think that they need to advise you where they're at, so we can find them. If we don't, it's purposeless of us going out. You know, I know that pictures have gone out, you know, trying to, everybody's been kind of discrediting our district with stuff that we don't even know if it's from here. So if nobody can show exactly where they came from, how do we know it was from here?
Right. It's very hard to identify the place, sir.
Exactly, so that's why it's so important for people to actually go through that process.
But you have gone through the ones that I've sent you and you've addressed them, you've told me, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Well, there's two. One of them, we never identified the place or the nature of it.
Okay, well, you can send me which one, because I don't want to be getting information that's false either. And so I make sure, I want to make sure that what I'm sending to you, like you said, has been addressed.
What's funny is that people want, do you use the word transparency, you know, those are the words, but yet they can't follow a simple chain of command, and they say they're scared, intimidated. By whom, by how, what that mean? No one's been told what, who offended them or who made them feel that way.
Mr. Ramirez.
It just seems like it's political propaganda.
Mr. Ramirez, there's people that are intimidated by you.
They can tell you what they want, it's not what you know, it's what you can prove, and people, unless they say so and so told me this, that's intimidation. Unless they can tell you who said it and why, and why they feel that way, then they can tell you the sky is red, which you all always assume is the case.
But the fact is that there's people that feel intimidated.
But you want transparency, you all want transparency, you can't even follow a chain of command. Just saying.
The only thing I'm saying is, let's say you have Bus 47 that's speeding. Bus 47 is speeding, okay, Mr. Garcia can get to it, but buses are speeding, well, that's difficult. I just say, if we're going to have a problem, that a certain thing is not working in a certain room, or a certain apparatus in a certain place, identify the place, identify the bus, identify what it is.
I agree.
We can get to it, you know, and that's the only thing I say. For me, it's real simple. Building six, room 25 on the right corner, well, that's fine. Bus 37, but just to go out there and say, this bus is speeding, it's real difficult, but which one's speeding, basically?
I motion to adjourn.
Okay, enough is enough.
All right, going back to the housekeeping rule, I don't want to single him out, but I think we have a birthday boy, journey seal, have a birthday. He's 21 plus 17, I think.
And Johnny Pope tomorrow.
Johnny Pope tomorrow? It's good to know.
How many years, Mr. Pope?
21.
That's what I thought.
And second, because we got started so late, and I know there's a lot of agenda in this, I think I'm going to limit discussion from board members to three minutes each per item. That'll put us at 21 minutes max per item, I think that's more than adequate, it's just too, for efficiency purposes, so. Starting with that, I'll go into section five, reports and information. Item one, report on construction projects, I have Ms. Morio present.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Peña, our entire school board. At this time, we're about to present a video highlighting our RGC GISD construction projects
Thank you, Mr. Morio. Yeah, okay, item two is report on RSSP cycle four, school year 2023-2024, have Ms. Ayana present.
I had a question on the construction.
Sure.
What's going on, who's the one in charge, Mr. Lopez, for the, what's going on with a, with a middle school, Roma?
Roma?
Roma.
We don't have a middle school.
Gruia.
We don't have a middle school in Roma.
Gruia, sorry.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, members of the audience, still, we just went today, they're still with the dirt, moving it from one section to the other. We're still waiting on the permit. I know the last board meeting that we had, our civil engineer turned in his plans back to the county a few days after our last board meeting. The county already returned it back to him for some corrections, and our civil engineer just turned it back in, maybe right before 5:30 today.
Okay, does, do you know about the water bill that we have, not water bill, but water rights, the 200,000? Is that having anything to do with this, the city not giving us the permit?
I think that's a question for legal.
There's no bill of any kind?
We don't have, there's no bill for 200,000, that's just, that's a figment of somebody's imagination. We will discuss that in executive session. I did have a meeting, but there, we do not owe anybody, we do not owe anybody 200,000.
So the permit from the.
All of the, all of the bills that we've had from the union, water supply, they're all current.
So that has nothing to do with us being on hold and not getting the permit to continue?
The permit that we're waiting on is from the, from county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. All right, item, I'm sorry, Ms. Ayana, I already called you, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. I'm going to present to you just information on RSSP. This is the Resilient Schools program that we're engaging in, this is our fourth and final year. Next slide, please. So I'm just, it's supposed to be a simple conversation that we're going to have, just that you, I'm going to discuss the opportunities that RSSP has offered, RGC GISD, the goals that we've chosen as a school district for this coming school year, and how we align to all the different initiatives that we have in our school district. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So what is the Resilient Schools program? Basically, this is a program that TEA initiated to aim, that ensured students across Texas that accelerated learning in the supports of all the environments, all the learning environments that, of course, were a reflection off of COVID. So this is something that we started way back when. So RSSP has opened the doors to RGC GISD with a lot of the different initiatives, such as the grants that we've received throughout the different years, well, years as we've done. We are entering the fourth and final year of RSSP. Next slide. So in this process, for continuous improvement, we have two cycles. Our first cycle will go through August, all the way through September of 2023, and cycle two will go through January, all the way through May 2024. So with, at each cycle, we have a mid-cycle step back, and we do meet with TEA to see the improvement review, as part of an improvement review, to discuss the progress that we have towards our goal. Next slide, please. So the members of our RSSP team include our superintendent, Mr. Peña, our assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Ms. Elsa Morris, myself as the lead, Ms. Pat Soto as our data fellow, Ms. Guadalupe Garza as CNI member, member of the team, Idani Salinas as Effective School Administrator, member of the team, Nora Rivera, our E3 Plus Project Manager, member of the team. Next slide, please. We also have Mr. Martinez, our Bilingual Programs Director, as a member of the team. We also have, again, Ms. Garza and Ms. Idani with the ESF and the SAF grant, and of course, myself, which we have the Gates Grant going on, T-Class Decision Two with High Quality Instructional Materials, the Lasso with the Crimsy, and the Strong Foundations with the Math Program. Next slide, please. We also have Ms. Olivares with the Lasso Blended Learning Model Grant that we got, and also Mrs. Marisela Garcia with Special Services, and Ms. Nidia Benitez alongside with Dr. Trevino with the TIA T-Test, the Mentoring Program, and also the Strong Foundations with Arlie. And those are just a few of the different grants and initiatives that we do have due to RSSP. Thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide. So our goal for this year and our focus is going to be fourth grade mathematics, and we chose that because across the state, we saw that fourth grade math is still an area of concern, so we're kind of reducing the area of concern, and as far as we want to target for this particular school year. We're going to work with lesson internalization, which is the research-based instructional strategies. We're, again, our focus would be fourth grade, and we're going to focus with the following elementary schools, John and Olive Inojosa Elementary, Alto Bonito Elementary, Alberto Celia Elementary, La Unión, and Roque Guerra. And the majority of these, all of these schools have a brand new principal this year, so we chose these schools in particularly, just to make sure that we do work with the principals alongside with the staff that they do have in that particular grade level. We're also working with the subpopulation that is important for our accountability system, which is our ECODIS kiddos, the special education, and our emergent bilinguals. Next slide, please. So in this cycle of the goals and the data, as you can see, we want, we want to increase, okay, the scores on the math star by the end of May of 2023, by 5%, which we did meet that goal from last year, and we want to continue to increase those scores. And the educator capacity, 100% of our instructional coaches will participate in the RB's training, and we're having that training this week, by the way. And we, of course, last time, in our last, last year, we met the goal 100%, Ms. Pat Soto did a wonderful job by doing that training, now we're going to get an additional training by our providers. The educator fidelity, at least 75% of our instructional coaches incorporated the math RBs into the coaching conversation, and again, this was part of our, through our step meetings, and then of course, the coaching conversation agendas, this is where it was notified, we did meet that goal 100% this past school year, and the student outcomes, the proportion of students that met the meets, and above will increase at least five percentage points for each focus campus between interim one and interim two, and we met the alignment for most of our, most of all our subpopulations. Next slide, please. So our cycle one goals for this year, again, is going to be 90% of our fourth grade teachers will take each mid-module and module assessment corresponding to the units during cycle one to deliver lessons based on the conceptual and procedural learning. 90% of attendees of all the PLCs focused on the lessons, internalizations, say that their knowledge and their skills have increased, 90% of the coaches participate in math RBs training, and that their knowledge and skills will be increased. And the instruments we're using here is Eureka assessments, tracker, surveys, and that's how we're going to be collecting the data from our educators. The educator fidelity, 90% of walkthroughs will demonstrate at least one of the RB's descriptions, descriptors on the math RBs on a rubric, and that'll be on their walkthrough form. And the student outcomes, average scores for students will increase by at least 5% for the ECODIS, Emergent Bilinguals, and special ed, from Eureka modules one all the way to three. And we chose those modules, because those will be the modules that'll be completed by our fourth graders from now all the way to December for our first cycle. Next slide, please. So our implementation milestones, some of our key milestones here is that we roll out Eureka math module assessments to teachers, ensure that campus teams are available to complete two plus one of the RBs walkthroughs per six weeks for each focus area teacher, schedule PLCs on lesson, on lesson internalization, and schedule RBs training for teachers. Next slide, please. Looking ahead, this is what we want to do, we want to increase leadership capacity among campus administrators, we want to increase teacher leadership capacity at each campus, and 100% of our teachers and administrators trained in the math RBs, using the math RBs in most of our math lessons. So I think it's important that our students and our teachers are able to recognize that their learning strategies based on research. And that's the end of my presentation.
Any questions, discussion on item number two? All right, thank you. Section, I think that's all for reports and information, so proceed to section six, recommending and approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. So consent agenda item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City Gruia ISD. There are most any discussion on item number one.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item one, two, and three, which will be a consent agenda. The only thing would be nice to basically mention the people who are donating the money.
Yes, there's a motion by Mr. Barrial, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required on any of the items?
Just whoever they are, just, don't have to put the amounts, just who they are, so they at least can be identified, ma'am.
Ms. Lopez, Mendez.
Yes. The donations were from Elsa and Victor Morris, Omega Six Insurance Group, Van Boosters, Juveam, BTX One Internet, Christina Peña, Adolfo Peña Jr., Adolfo Peña Sr., RGC, HS Van Booster, Rodriguez Thor Number One, Dr. Erica Guerra, Christina Peña, Adolfo Peña Jr., Luis J. Garza and Associates, Alonso Armendades, Runners, VFW, Marco Olivares, Luis J. Garza.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion required? There been all's in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number four, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from City of Rio Grande City Parks and Recreation Department for adult soccer league activities, Rio Grande City High School football field. There are most any discussion on item number four.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item four, five, six, seven, and eight, as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrial to approve items four through eight, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña, any discussion required on any of those items? On item number four, I did see there's, that there's pending liability insurance, is that correct? Is that still the case?
Ms. Lopez.
I just want to make sure, but I think it's, I mean, it's a great idea, but I just don't know if they, is that pending liability insurance on there?
Yes, they always do provide their liability insurance to us.
Okay, so it's just pending?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion required on any other item?
I'm abstaining from item number four.
Okay. Mr. Castillo will be abstaining from item number four. All right. There was a motion by Mr. Barrial, there was a second by Mr. Peña, all's in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, noting that Mr. Castillo did abstain from item number four. Item number nine, consider and take possible action on agreement for architectural. on agreement for architectural services with Design Group International for the shipping and receiving and food service warehouse. Do we have a motion or discussion on item number nine?
Mr. President, I move that we table item nine, 10, and 11.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela to table items nine, 10, and 11. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required? There being none, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 12, consider and take possible action on pay application number 13 for RGC GISD Faculty and Student Training Center payable to NM Contracting LLC. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 12?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 12 and 13 as presented in our board package.
All right, on item 13, Mr. Varela, we will have to make an amendment. I believe it reads, consider and take possible action on change proposal request number 17, number 21, and number 24 for RGC GISD Faculty and Student Training Center from NM Contracting LLC. Number 24 had been approved already back in our June 2023 board meeting. So it's just going to pertain to request number 17 and 21.
Mr. President, then I amend my motion. I approve item, item 12 and 13 with requests on 17 and 21.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required? There being none, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 14, consider and take possible action on reimbursable expenses, number 17, for Performing Arts Center payable to the Warren Group Architects Incorporated.
Mr. President, I move that we table item 14, 15, and 16.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela to table items 14, 15, and 16. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez, is there any discussion required? There being none, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 17, consider and take possible action on pay application number three for Grúia High School resurfacing project payable to Hades Construction Incorporated. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 17?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 17, 18, 19, and 20 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 17 through 20. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required?
I have a question on 20. What, just if somebody can tell me why there's that change of $59,000? What happened there?
I have a question, Ms. Ramirez.
Do you need, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Peña Superintendent, to answer your question, ma'am? That change order comes after we did a walkthrough with the project engineer and project architect, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Ramiro Nosa. We did a thorough walkthrough and the main item on that change order is to replace the entire metal roof. We considered another alternate, which was to spray it and to seal some of the leaks that were happening there. But because it appeared to the engineer that that particular roof had already been sprayed more than once before, I consider the fact that this building was built in the late 1970s. So they recommended that we replace the entire roof. And that's the majority of the cost there.
So it's something they didn't foresee when they did the first plans?
It was considered but left out to keep the cost low. Because we only had to work with a certain budget. So that was one of the main reasons that that particular item was left out originally.
Are we still in budget, sir, as far as?
Yes, we're still in budget, sir, yes.
When was the roof built, you say?
That building was built in the late 1970s. And it appeared from inspecting it, getting on the lift and inspecting it with the architect and engineer, that that roof's already been sprayed over the metal roof more than once. So they don't recommend that we do that again.
So you figure the roof is between 45 and 50 years more?
That is correct.
And, Mr. Ramirez, did we get any, any more bids?
It's a change order simply because it's already under contract with that particular builder.
So we don't, we don't, Mr. Salazar?
No, if the, if the change order is more than 25%, then you have to bid it out. But this is, I think I figured it out, it's like 4.5%, less than 5%. So because I think the total bid was 500 and?
And 37,000.
537,000, so it's way under the 5%. So you're not required to.
It's from the bond, right?
That's correct.
Let me make one thing, Mr. Ramirez. The thing that we're fixing is, correct me if I'm wrong, is it for the football players to go during halftime for the referees and things of that nature? Who's this project for?
It's for all athletes, mainly any event held at the stadium, primarily football games and track meets, and of course, your graduations as well.
So it's for the students, correct?
Mostly students, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand?
I approve items 17, 18, and 19 against item 20.
Okay, so you're in favor for 17, 18, 19. So you're voting against item 20. Mr. Castillo, you're abstaining from which one?
19.
19? Okay. So everybody else on 17, 18, 19, and 20, all those in favor, so signified? Almost same sign except for 20, Mr. Velazquez voting against. And item 19, Mr. Castillo abstaining. So motion passes. Item 21, consider and take possible action on budget amendment number 2024-2. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 21?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 21 through 25. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required on any of those items? There being none, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 26, consider and take possible action on student-learner objective, SLO, timeline for the 2023-2024 school year. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 26?
Mr. President, I want to approve a bunch of them because they're all just handbooks and things of that nature. Item 26, I approve, I move that we approve item 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 26 through 35. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña, any discussion?
They're all manuals, correct me, and appraisal calendars and, and things of that nature, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
I have different doc, Dr. Salinas, I think. I think you were presenting on most of them.
That's all they are, right?
That statement is true.
Appraisal calendars, manuals, and things of that nature, correct?
Okay. I know it's quite a bit of?
And you checked everything out, everything's good, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, right, sir? Okay, sir.
Any further discussion required? All right, there being none, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 36, consider and take possible action on Roga City Grúia ISD non-T test, non-T test?
It's T test?
T test.
That's, so that's the typo, it's not me. All right, so it's not, not T test, not?
It's right, it is right?
Non-T test.
You're getting tongue-tied, Mr. Ramirez.
I am, I am.
All right, so Mr. Peña said, okay, employee evaluation instrument and timeline for the 2023-2024 school year. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 36?
Can you repeat it again, Mr. Ramirez?
I'd rather, I'd rather not.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that we approve item 36, 37. Again, these are all just things of, that they have to do. But 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, and 46. And these are just university data sharing equip. These are all things that the, our staff is doing, basically.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 36 through 46. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, is there any discussion required on any of those items?
I had a question on the item 40, just want to know a little bit about that.
Okay, I have Nidia Benitez or Ms. Varela Morris?
Item number 40 is consider and take possible action on teacher incentive allotment fee submission. We will be submitting our data this year for the teacher incentive allotment. So we're looking at, hopefully next year, if our data is accepted, we would have the first designation or the first round of designations. And if I can direct you to page 288, the allotment submission requires a fee of $500 for every person or every teacher who qualifies for a designation. However, on page 288, it does let you know that the district will initially have to pay the $500 designation fee. But upon receiving the designation, we do get that money back. So I just wanted to make sure that that was probably one of the highlights of that item. But that would allow our teachers to be designated at the three different levels. And that would be something that would remain for five years once they become designated.
This is, this compensation comes from the state, correct?
It comes straight from the state. And we've been working on this process probably about two and a half years already, so.
It's where teachers get 10, not 10, but thousands of dollars?
Anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000 added to their salary for at least five years, and it does count for their TRS as well. And if they retire and they get designated, the designation continues for whatever remainder of that five-year period is.
Great, thank you.
That's FSB Tier One.
Fantastic, ma'am.
Any further discussion required on any of those items? There being none, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 47, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between Region One Education Service and Roga City Grúia ISD for PIM services for the 2023-2024 school year.
Again, these are just housekeeping. I move that we approve item 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, and 57 with some questions.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 47 through 57. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña, did you have discussion, Mr. Varela?
Yes, on item 55, tutorials. Where are these tutorials going to happen? And how are we getting funded? And when do we start and when do we end? And how much are they getting paid?
Good evening, Board President, Board Member Superintendent Peña, and members, everybody present here. Tutorials, it is being funded through SE this school year. And it does have several programs, like we always do. We have a high school will begin, have approved in the month of September. Middle school's in elementary second semester. And for high schools, we do have credit recovery, credit by exam. It includes a portion for TSIA two testing, also TSIA preparation, the AP program preparation. And also we have, we're including tutors for Decision Six and T-Class.
How much are they getting paid? And who are the tutors usually? Are they teachers or?
For regular tutorials, it's teachers, classroom teachers, it's $30 an hour.
And the people who get tutored, I guess, are the people, the children that are struggling with, with the STAR exam or things of that nature?
Correct.
Okay. One more question?
Any further discussion?
I just have one from Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, Mr. Peña?
Item 55, 56, if I could.
Why do you single her out?
No, it's because I, was there a manual you wanted us to review? Or is just, this is the note change, it's just updating the amounts?
I don't know, I found it in the section that was going to change under federal policies. We used to pay a presenter $750 for a six-hour presentation. But we lowered it back to $30 an hour, again, trying to cut costs. So any presenter will receive $30 an hour for presentations up to six hours a day. That was the only change.
From within the district?
Sir?
Within the district?
Yes, of course, within the district.
Because there might be some consultants that come from the outside, and those are paid according to the?
Correct.
Okay, that's the only change. Yeah, because usually there's a big old manual that you submit with these. And I live through it, but this one, okay, that's the only change, all right.
He's waiting for the Bible.
Mr. President, I also would like an item 49, consider and take possible action, revise E3 Grow Your Own incentives. If you could give us an idea what that's about.
Yeah, Morris?
Yes, item number 49, we've been working closely with our E3 grant together with the Human Resources Department and the direction of Dr. Arcadio Salinas. And we did apply for the state TA, does have a Grow Your Own, which we got last year, but we were not renewed this year. So we were able to work with our E3 partners to secure about 100 and, I'm not a mathematician, hold on. $186,000 for our teachers. We will be paying out 19 individuals from our district. And I am very proud to be able to stand here and say that because of our programs, because of our partners, and because we work together, not only curriculum, but human resources, we bring them into the fold. We will be giving 15 $10,000 payments to our teachers who have maybe not the certification, but have their degree or they're holding. So there's 15 individuals, some of these are in holding capacity, some of these are teacher aides. So they all have their degrees, they will be getting two payments of $5,000, their first one being given before September 30th, am I correct, Doc? And then there are four individuals who will be receiving $12,000. And these individuals are individuals within our district as well who are working on their degree, but for whatever reason have not completed their degree. They will be getting three payments of $4,000, with the first one going out September 30th as well. So it's 19 individuals, 186,000 going back to our teachers or people working on their certifications. And this is part of growing and, and, and building our own teachers in our own pipelines, so.
So this is all grant-funded, correct?
It's all grant-funded through E3, with our E3 partner.
And it's all about growing our own teachers, basically growing our teachers from our, within our district, correct?
It's like a retention recruitment incentive that we kind of work together on.
Fantastic, ma'am, congratulations.
To add more details, there's 15 candidates that are degreed and are seeking Texas Educator Certification. And then four paraprofessionals that are at the end of their degree plan with 110 hours with a 2.75 GPA.
That is correct.
That's fantastic, ma'am. I mean, hopefully we can keep at getting it for, in the future.
We will present them at our next board meeting, Doc. Well, I think you all are going to discuss the recommendation during executive. And then at our next board meeting, we'll have them present.
Awesome. Mr. Peña?
Would you also like Ms. Morris to elaborate a little bit? This is one of the programs that was highlighted by Commissioner Moret last week. You want to let the board know?
Yes, on Thursday, was it Thursday, Ms. Peña? At the, yes, our afternoon superintendent call, we got a call about two weeks ago asking if we would be willing to feature our mentor program during Mr. Peña's superintendent call. The mentor program was a program that we worked together with HR about a year and a half ago, putting together this grant. And it's something that's always been available, but for whatever reason, our district did not apply. So we put our heads together with a committee, and we were able to secure that allotment. And that allotment gives us money to be able to build capacity in brand-new teachers. So we got about $100,000? About $100,000 because it lets us count any teacher who has one, two, or three years in their career. And we're able to use that money to provide staff development, to secure a mentor for them, which means that we're able to pay either an experienced teacher or a teacher who has already exhibited success, a stipend to work with that teacher. We had different activities. So the people that we were working with at TA who work under the commissioner saw that this program looked like it was working, it was successful, they were able to reach out to us and ask questions. So we did about two or three interviews. To be able to get on the call, we had to go through different stages. And then at the end, they said, okay, you've been selected. So we were the only district selected to be on that call. So we were the only district selected to be on that call, and Mr. Peña had about twenty minutes of airtime with the commissioner and all of the superintendents across the state of Texas, so that was a great honor for us, because it was something that when we sat and put our heads together and said, hey, we need it, how do we build it? Well, there's money, okay, well, let's write the grant, we wrote it, we got it, but we didn't think that something to us that was very insignificant but very much needed would yield that kind of recognition. And so it was really, really great to be able to share that with other superintendents across the state. So they want to come visit, so we said, you better, so we already cleared up days, we said, you keep saying you're going to come visit, so they said this time they would, so we're hoping that TA comes for a good reason to visit, to see some of the great things that are happening, because there's a lot of things happening, but sometimes people don't know, because we don't brag enough, I think, sometimes.
The commissioner's getting real comfortable calling us, right, for academic advice, no?
This is a second call?
Yes.
Yeah, tell them to get their own secrets from someone else. We're trying to get ahead, and we get ahead, and they want to take all our ideas, nooo.
True, good one.
Don't, don't talk to them no more, they'll blow the phone.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Peña.
I'd like to commend, you know, our curriculum department, you know, for always looking out for the betterment of our district, for our students and our teachers. It is because of their dedication, their passion, looking for these grants, bringing it back to our students, our district, that's why we are where we are today, that's why we are an A district. So I'm very blessed to work with them, I thank you all for all your hard work, endless nights, because to write a grant, it takes weeks, days, late evenings, weekends, you know, and, and, you know, they don't stop, they keep going. So thank you very much, Ms. Morris, curriculum department, Ms. Benitez, who spearheads that department, you know, great job, keep it up, guys.
And I'm glad you said that, because I'm privy to, because you all spend so much time and so many hours, like, we don't always agree on everything, and there's a little bit of, ah, sometimes, you know, but it's all because you all want the best, and you're so passionate, and you fight for what you think is the best, the best way to do things, but it's collaboration at the end of the day, so congratulations to everybody again. All right, there was a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item fifty-eight, consider and take possible action on agreement between Region One ESC and Roga City Gruya ISD for child, find child served for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five, and these are all, I think, career, partnerships for career technology, whether it's lobotomy, nursing, it's a lot of our technical programs that we have, and they've been very successful in the past.
I second that, okay. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Velazquez? A second by Mr. Velazquez, is there any discussion required? I think Mr. Varela hit on the nail, they've been very successful, we get to post so many certifications and it's just increasing and getting bolder, Mr. Peña?
Yes, sir, I might like to also congratulate Ms. Varela and her team, they're always looking out for grants. She just got a JET grant that will enhance our welding high school program, so congratulations, Ms. Varela and your department. Keep bringing those funds.
How much was the JET grant for?
Ms. Varela, how much is a grant?
How much are those grants worth? Sorry?
Three hundred. Three hundred and a month.
Three hundred? Dollars or thousands? Okay.
So thank you very much, Ms.
Yes. All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Velazquez, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item sixty-six, consider and take possible action on adult meal prices for child nutrition program for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item sixty-six?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine as presented in our board package.
Okay, Mr. Varela, I'm going to ask you to amend, only sixty-nine, there was an additional addendum for the, for the early college high school.
Okay, let me, let me, let me make a motion again. Let me approve item sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine with the addendum that was just presented to us.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, any discussion required?
Quick pause.
Quick pause, okay.
And Mr. President, Board Members, I just want to let the board know that all of these contracts, all of the you looked at, they've all been reviewed by legal, and I was reviewing prior to bringing them to the board, so they have all been?
Real quickly, on number sixty-eight, that Stark County Juvenile Justice Center, what is that about, could I ask?
Ms. Patsy Ramirez?